Okay, gotcha.
Dead.
Oh, that's even better.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. I think our technology's all set up and our sound and we're ready. Welcome to our Clark County Fiscal Court meeting. We appreciate you taking of your time to be with us here today. I'm going to ask Pastor Pat Finley with Grace Baptist if he would come and give our invocation and if everyone would stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Do we pray? Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you, God, for your goodness to us. Thank you for your grace and for your mercy. Thank you, God, for this community that we live in. And I pray, God, that you would be at the business at hand today. We pray that, God, that it'll be dealt with in Christ-honoring way. We thank you, God, for these leaders. We pray, God, for Godly wisdom and discernment. And Lord, your Bible tells us that if we'll ask, then you give to us. So we ask for Godly wisdom and discernment as they move forward. And we just pray that you would just help our community to be a place that honors you. Thank you so much for the many, many blessings that you've blessed us with. And we thank you for all your goodness and your grace. And most of all, we thank you for Jesus. For it is in his holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge.
Pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we will call our meeting toward, and I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Magistrate Graham.
President.
Thompson.
Here.
Constantoplis.
President.
Blanton.
Here.
Davis.
President.
Elkins.
President.
Okay, Adam three is public comments, and our first is John Williams. Hey, John, we'll ask you to come to the microphone, and the floor is yours.
Thank you all for your time. My comments pertain to item 10 on the agenda, which is the purchase of voting machines.
Would you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry?
Raise it up there. There he's tall.
Given the controversies around the previous election, I think that the voters of Clark County should be given a presentation at some point, ideally even before the purchase of machines, and/or documentation, a document, a thoroughly comprehensive document that ensures the integrity of any voting machine and manual processes that are being used in the upcoming elections. What does integrity mean? It includes data protection, obviously, ballot protection, software audit, being able to get into the software on any machine and make sure that it is doing what it says it's doing, and being able to lock down that software, machine security, physical and electronic, and that's before, during, and after an election, control of vendor personnel, and no outside dollars coming into the county to process an election. Above all, it's election transparency. I have two questions. Who made the machines? And does that corporation have any connection to Dominion? Because that's the company that seemed to have the biggest controversy in the past election. And why are the current machines being replaced? Are they obsolete? Is it just for the...
We can answer those questions. We actually have someone here.
I saw the machines.
Yeah, we brought one in so that if anybody wants to see it, can see how it works and all that, so.
Right. Being able to do that in the course of a meeting like this is a surface, if you will, investigation of the process. So, anyway, I'm curious as to why the machines are being replaced at this particular point in time.
Okay.
You know, the purpose of it is.
And say right there just for a minute, I'm going to look to the court members here. At this point in time, should we go ahead and do the presentation? This is a regular court meeting, so we can re...
Are you able to stick around for a few minutes, Mr. Williams?
I'm going to stick around for the...
It's already on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
I'll just take it up.
I think you'll get your question answered.
I just wanted to get these comments out before the presentation.
Right, and we may have to go back and ask you, like you had two questions in particular, and when we have a representative up here, we may want you to repeat those questions, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. What was your address?
I'm sorry?
What was your address?
524 Big Stoner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Chief Steve Asbury. Chief?
Good morning. Steve Asbury, 15 Middlebrook Drive, Winchester, Kentucky. I just wanted to come before the fiscal court today and let everyone know that we did declare state of emergency on January 6 during the snow event. I believe we were only one of four that declared in the state that day. But fortunately, the state did declare as well, so we will be eligible for funds if we meet all the thresholds and the state meets theirs as well. I'm also up here today to ask that for the fiscal court's help in asking for volunteers for Red Cross. The Red Cross, where, you know, we didn't shelter anyone that day, but we know that there's going to be events like that that happen. I'd actually talked to the fiscal court and didn't predict that event, but I did say if we ever had an event where we had motorists stranded, we may have to shelter those individuals. And luckily, that day, we did not, but it will come soon. So I ask you all to, anytime you're out in the public and you're talking to, you know, prospective voters possibly, ask them to volunteer for Red Cross because we're going to need shelter workers. Perry and myself are coming up with a plan also for the CSEP exercise, that we will need a shelter, and we're going to need workers, volunteer workers for those shelters during that event as well. So it's just a good thing. Not asking people to be true, full-fledged Red Cross members unless they just want to be, but we would like to see people volunteer in our community to open things like shelters and things like that. Thank you all.
And Chief, you have just a minute.
Yes.
Chief, Perry and I were in a meeting the other day when this was revealed to us, and they actually said, if I heard them right, Chief, we have no Red Cross volunteers in Clark County as of right now.
That is correct.
It's the first time that we've been in a situation like this. We've always had one or two, but they said zero, right?
We have zero currently. According to the Red Cross, we have zero. Now, if someone believes they're a Red Cross volunteer, we ask them to reach out to the Red Cross and make sure we clear that up, but we have zero in our county.
And we have that contact information, and we do that for the court's information, but also for the public information.
Yes, sir.
If we have...
If anyone's watching the fiscal court meeting and is interested, just call Clark County Fire Department, 745-0260, or contact myself or Ms. Perry personally. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we have minutes of the meeting of December 21.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Magistrate Blanton.
Second.
Uh-oh. We'll take a second by Magistrate Davis. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have minutes of December 29.
Motion approved, second.
Motion by Magistrate Constantoplis, second by Magistrate Blanton. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have your transfers list.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Magistrate Blanton.
Second.
Second by Magistrate Constantoplis. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, so the, I'm assuming the 200,000, is that a jail transfer or the transfer? 4909 to 4910?
Yes.
Any other questions?
That, I guess, is primarily for payroll, I would assume.
Yes, and to pay the bills. They have not received unsecured checks as of today, so we have to pay bills and the paychecks, payroll.
Nothing further, Judge.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have a pre-authorized bills list, and then you have a bills list we need to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Magistrate Constantoplis, second by Magistrate Elkins. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the treasurer's report for December. Any comments or questions on... Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Then we have the Clark County Fiscal Court FY 2020 audit. Any comments on the audit?
Just for the public's benefit, would someone kind of go through these, the comments that we got? There's, it looks like there's 10 or 12 of them, maybe. You don't have to go into detail, just maybe some general comments.
Just as a clarification, this is for July of 2019 through June of 2020. The comments in the report are over internal controls and segregation duties. And we have unresolved the majority of those issues. There is a daily deposit on comment, which we have unresolved as well. A payroll comment, according to my records, violated the payroll account, and we are currently resolving that issue with our new payroll account. Another segregation comment, which, again, we have unresolved with the additional staff that we have hired. A failure to report comment on the quarterly, that was just a... They had forgotten to put the new debt for the Ward Department on a quarterly report when it was submitted to DLG. The CFA comment, which is our federal awards, it was not submitted on time, so that comment made it into there as well. Another internal controls comment, which, again, has been corrected. And then there was expenses for the, for the CARES Act. The report that was submitted for the CARES Act had an error on the amount, which caused us to get reimbursed for more than the actual expense was. So they said it was an ineligible expense. However, we did turn in more than we received in the CARES Act, so it kind of washes itself out. But we will contact DLG to see if there is anything that we need to do on that aspect.
You feel like these, all these issues will be resolved by the time of our next audit?
Not the 2021, but I'm confident in the 2022 audit, that we will be majority resolved at that point.
Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Alicia, you were only, what, one or two, were you one or two months of this audit?
I was not a part.
You were not a part of it at all, that's right, that's right, yeah.
It was September of 2020.
That's correct.
So this was not me.
I couldn't remember. I know it was close there.
Correct, it was close.
You're confident that the purchase orders situation is resolved?
We are working on it, yes, we are. We are, like, new staff and everything, but we are developing procedures and everything to make sure that that is resolved.
Yeah, I do understand that you were not a part of this audit, but that is concerning, I think, the purchase order. Couple of others, but I know you've corrected several of them, I think the payroll account did one. I don't have anything further, Judge.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll note that in our minutes. Next, we have the conversation about our voting machines. And Michelle, do you want to have Danny come on up?
I want to have Danny come up.
And Danny, you heard some of the questions from the citizen comment there.
Right, perhaps we could just give him a overview of why we are asking for these and what...
Why we're replacing them, we'll start with that.
Why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay. First of all, the machines are manufactured by HARP Inter-Civic. They're out of Austin, Texas. No relation to Dominion at all. It's a completely separate manufacturing company. As far, and I think you also had mentioned, a lot of security concerns, which is big right now with voting equipment. I will point out first that I am from HARP Enterprises, which is right down the street from you guys, and we actually do the programming, the setting of the machines, the accuracy test. So we check all that out. We run a test through every machine to make sure that the votes are accurate before we turn that over to Michelle for Election Day. Everything is sealed and locked. You'll notice on the equipment that there are several locks, different keys to have access to that, and everything is sealed up. We do a security form that has all the numbers of the seals that are checked by the election board, that checked by us before we turn that over, checked by the poll workers on Election Day. I also have some kind of advanced security features that I'll cover real quickly, just for your, you know, to get those concerns. The ports on all the equipment, well, first of all, there's no modems. That's a big, a big thing that's always asked about. Are there modems in these machines that can relay election results back to somewhere and then get hacked and changed? There are no modems in this equipment. The device physical access controls, so there's all kinds of, there's a few ports on this. Those are non-standard ports. So even a printer, that type of thing that's plugged into the tally computer at night, you can't just go grab a cable from Walmart and plug that printer into this. It's not a standard printer port. You know, it is security on that cable that goes into that. These run in kiosk mode. The computers that we use to program and set the election equipment is also ran in kiosk mode, and that means that it's only designed to do that one thing. So you can't, you know, I can't go play solitary while I'm, you know, doing your election. It only has the election software on that. Those machines are not connected to the internet at any point. They do go through a secure boot process, which there's hash files in this equipment that it double-checks when it boots up. If you were here when I booted this equipment up, it does take about five minutes to boot, and that's not because it's old equipment. You know, this is the newest, latest design voting equipment, but it is going through all those security checks as it boots up to make sure that the hash files on this equipment matches what was certified federally and by the state. And so it does go through a federal and state certification before we're allowed to sell the equipment. Trust lists, so it uses whitelisting. So if anybody were to try to come in and put any kind of other software on this, if somehow they were able to do that, this machine won't boot. It has a list of programs on that BIOS, the hardware, that it only allows to run. So if something else is trying to run, shuts down, won't work. Tamper evidence, there's, on the back, you'll notice some tamper evidence seals. If those are broken, it lets us know there's an issue. User authentication, of course, there's passwords that we have to use to get on there. There's also a special security key, which I've got inside the machine. I can show you guys later if you want. It's just a blue drive that we have to have, or Michelle has to have, in order to do anything with this equipment. So you can't come in and put election, anything on that without the password and the security token. So, and only we have access to that. Michelle has access to that. All kinds of audit logs that we can pull off of this, audit logs on our computer where we set up and programmed that device, so that if we had to, we could go back through and check that. And then you would ask, you know, why we're purchasing new voting equipment. So the biggest thing is a voter-verified paper trail, so that every voter in Clark County that votes will have some type of paper trail at the end of the voting process. And currently, part of your equipment does not offer that. It's electronic. So if they go into the ADA device, the accessible handicap device, where somebody could go in and vote if they're blind, having trouble seeing, they would not have a paper ballot at the end of that process. That vote gets stored on the equipment. I'm 100% confident that it's correct, but it's actually coming down from state and federal guidelines that want you to have that paper trail. And so we're no longer allowed to sell equipment that doesn't have a paper trail. And the equipment that you currently have is also about 15, 15 years old. Yeah, and so we're having, you know, they don't make it anymore because it's 15-year-old technology, which now is much more secure, all the things that I've currently mentioned. So it's a big upgrade as far as the voting process in Clark County. I don't know if you guys, if you guys have any questions, if you, you know, have any more questions?
I have just a couple small questions.
Sure.
Where are the paper, the paper trail? Where's it stored? And how often is it stored?
So it actually drops inside here. This is the ADA device, which is a full touchscreen. It allows a voter that is blind can use the controls that you currently have on your current equipment. They could go through, vote this ballot completely by themselves. At the end of that process, it's going to print off a piece of paper, and that gets scanned into this machine. And then the majority of your voters will use pre-printed paper ballots that look just like this. That will get scanned into this voting machine, and everything's dropped in here, and this will be locked and sealed. At the end of that, we could come back and do an audit of that. We could pull all of these ballots out and hand count them if we had to, if there was a question about the results. And Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but those ballots are stored for 22 months?
22 minutes.
22 months.
Will they go back to you all first?
Yeah, they are pulled out of this after 60 days, and then they are stored for 22 months after that.
And then they're disposed of?
They can be disposed of. That's up to the candidate board of elections, that process.
Thank you.
Does that answer any, all of your questions?
Mr. Williams, is it?
Yes.
It does. Part of the point of what I was saying to begin with is that I think the county needs to assure the voters for a presentation or documentation or whatever, that the overall process, that the county goes to do the elections, has addressed all the controversies that were present in the prior election. I'm sure your machine is great. I'm sure it does all kinds of good things. But how that machine is used within the county, the processes that they use, the controls that they put on you to ensure that things work the way the county wants them to, those are the things that I'm talking about. I know that these machines all have software. I don't know that the county has ever gone through the software with you. You say that they're set certain ways when you turn the machine over to the county. Were you aware of the settings of the machine? Do you agree with the settings that are in the machine? That's one of the problems that happened, is that software was updated in the midst of the elections, caused a delay on these other machines. And, I mean, it was, it was, who knows what was going on? Yes, there are no voters, but you still present a set machine to the county. And so the county has to be assured that what you have set is what the county wants in that machine. Does that make sense in terms of control?
They do the accuracy test, and then myself, the sheriff, the Republican chair, and the Democrat chair, we all forego there, and we inspect every machine before it ever goes to the precincts.
And so with that accuracy test, I can kind of expand on that. As we, we do fill out, pre-fill out ballots, and we know what those results are going to be, what they should be. We scan those ballots through the machines, and then at the end, we print off a paper tape with the results. So it'd be just like election night. We scan 20, 25 ballots through that machine, close the polls, print the tapes out, and that should match the results that we pulled out and hand counted. And that's, obviously, it does, or we would never give that to Michelle. And then her board also does. We give her back those ballots that we scanned for her board to check to make sure that count matches the paper tape that came off that machine.
And we do do that.
And they are processing them all against, uh, to kick out ballots?
Exactly. We run an overvote, which would be voting for more candidates in an office than you're allowed. It'll kick that ballot out. That comes back to her board as well. She could see that to make sure that it didn't count that. We undervote, so we don't vote for, like a city council race, if it's a vote for six, we don't necessarily vote for all six. So we do have all that in place when we do our accuracy test, and then that's double-checked by her election board.
And I think, I think one of the key points, too, with this new technology, the current, several of the current machines that we have now that have that spin dial on it, they'll spin, make their selections, and then when they hit cast vote, then that vote is locked into a computer. There's no other record to view if something were to be considered, you know, was there a glitch in the system? Well, we don't know if there was 100 people that voted on it. We don't know how they voted. But based on this new technology, when you do the dial or hit the punch screen or however you do it, and you hit cast your vote, it prints out a paper ballot, which then you get to visually see that it marked exactly what you selected in the machine. And then you scan that into the machine, so we have a hard document to cover what was, what you entered into the machine. So if it prints out and you think there's a glitch, you can hand count each individual vote, where now we don't have that capability to do that.
And the reason we're coming to this now is because the state, or Secretary of State's Office has allowed some money out there that I applied for. So if my calculations are right, Danny and I have added up, we're going to get $57,200. You all voted last time for me to go, to notify the Secretary of State's Office that we wanted that money, and they said that's not how it works. They know that we want the money because I applied for it. But you all have to commit to buying the machines, or I, we lose that $57,000. And if we don't get the machines ordered this month, then there's no way that we can get anyone trained, myself included, or the board, and then our poll workers. If the poll workers don't know what to do, then the citizens won't know how to vote on it.
And that's not me as a third-party vendor pushing that.
Right.
That's coming from the state, you know, the state board of elections.
Right.
Well, and I mean, we ultimately have to have a paper trail of every vote. By, when is it? What, what is it?
I think it's, is it next year?
It's 2023, I'm pretty sure.
2023, huh?
It's coming today, I mean, no matter what. I just don't want to lose this money that I applied for. It's $57,000 that the citizens of Clark County don't want to pay for.
What's our part going to be?
126.
That's the total.
126 is what we're asking for, because with the state's 57, not the state's secretary, with the state of elections, 57. And that's by consolidating the precincts. If we went full-blown, we were looking at 326,000.
So our part's going to be 126 minus 57?
Minus 60 something, or 57.
So that's...
About 60 something.
60 some thousand.
I thought it was 94. I thought it was 94. I should have brought that here. I apologize.
Tell what, Michelle?
I thought it was 94.
After the rebate.
Should be, if it's 126 minus 57, it'd be about 69.
Well, since we had to go back and add trap, remember? That's where we went back and added trap.
Thought you said our part was 126.
That's what I thought we were asking for.
That's what I thought.
Was 126.
The 57 is on top of the 126.
That's what I thought.
Yes. No.
If you all don't mind, we're going to let Michelle go ahead.
Yes, please.
Right.
That way you'll know for sure.
How much per machine?
And I should have brought that, and I apologize.
Well, it's like 64 and 45, so it's not necessarily the same price. The two different machines are different prices, so combined, it's about 11, 12,000 per set.
So this is the ADA here?
Yes. I don't mind to do a quick demonstration if you want to see it. I don't know what kind of time you want to...
Well, we've got time now. Is it a take? How long's it take?
I mean, I can show you the two processes in less than a minute.
Sure, go ahead.
Way to go, Robert. That's seniority speaking.
This is just a pre-printed paper ballot that every voter, most voters will get. That's going to be taken over to a privacy booth. They're going to fill this out, mark it. And this will actually also answer one of the questions that you wanted asked, is when that voter goes to scan this, this machine now, and I know you guys can't see it up here, but you're going to hear it, ugly boy.
Mr. Williams? He was talking to you, sir.
One of the questions you had mentioned about the overvote, you know, who checked that, this is actually, I'd actually pre-filled out a ballot that does that. I had voted for two choices for a United States representative in Congress. It actually kicked this ballot out. It says on the screen, too many choices were made for this contest.
Oh, okay.
So it recognizes that, gives the voter plain English on... So it recognizes that, gives the voter plain English on what the issue is, kicks that ballot out. Now that gives them a chance to pull this ballot out and they can spoil this ballot. So in Kentucky, voters have three chances to get their vote right. It's kind of a three strikes and you're out. So they pull that ballot out, they're given a spoiled ballot envelope. That envelope gets placed into here, there's a bag inside that catches that to keep that separate from the scanned ballots. And then they can get another ballot, fill it out correctly. Or if they don't want to deal with that, they can cast it as is. It will pull that ballot in, count everything else that's marked correctly, except for that one race will not be counted. Because it was not marked correctly. The second thing you're going to see on this screen, it says a blank page. So this is a, a good improvement from the current equipment that you had. There's a, if there's a constitutional amendment, which occasionally happens, you've got a full ballot on the front, there's a question on the back. Even if you tell a voter, don't forget to vote, vote both sides, you're going to have voters forget to vote both sides. This machine actually lets us aware that we missed a, a race on the back. If we want to go fill that out, we can pull it out, take it back to the privacy booth, come back and, and scan that in. So it gives them that second chance before it actually drops. Because once this ballot drops, they're done, we can't, we can't give them another ballot. So I'll go ahead and process that ballot. So that's the basic premises, there's a lot more technical stuff that I would do in a full presentation, but that would take about thirty to forty-five minutes. This, as mentioned, is the ADA device. This is going to be for a voter who has some type of handicap that will not let them vote independently. So currently, you know, they can request somebody to go in with them, if they fill out a form, somebody can go in with them and actually help them vote. This machine will help them with that. So somebody that's completely blind could come in, this has braille, which this is a very similar layout to the equipment that you currently have, except now this comes out of the machine, this can be placed in their lap to be used with a wheelchair. You can plug headphones into this and it'll actually read instructions on the entire ballot. So a voter could completely vote without even seeing this screen independently. And they, and they can currently on your equipment. But as mentioned, once they first set cast ballot, it's stored on this piece of equipment. Now we have a paper trail that prints out. And I'll just print one of these out, we'll put that into the process. It does make the voter review their choice. So even after they went through this entire ballot, it makes them review their choices to make sure what this is saying on screen or what this reading is actually what they meant to mark. They have the option to go back and make a change to that ballot at this point. If everything looks correct, they will print this ballot out. And this will be kind of a summary ballot, it won't look exactly like the ballot that it shows you, but it will have the office name and then their selections across from that. And I'll just kind of show you what that looks like. And I'll pass this around to you guys, this is a, a ballot summary. I skipped a lot of races, left us blank and that's probably fine. Now, at this point, a voter still has a chance. If, I mean, I know if they're blind, they're not going to be able to do this, but if it's just a, a hard of seeing and they needed to use this machine to blow that text up, they can still spoil that ballot as well. So that ballot could be placed in a spoiled ballot envelope and they still have two more chances to vote on this piece of equipment as well. So there's plenty of chances to get that vote how the voter wants it. And then, as we mentioned, that gets scanned into this and, and everybody has a paper trail in here. Then if we had to pull all those ballots out and hand count them at the end of the election, we could to verify that what comes off this paper tape at the end of the night matches what's in here. There are cards that also, at the end of the night, poll workers, this is behind a lock seal, they will have a key, they'll have to break a seal, there's a little V-drive in there that contains the election results. So the results are actually stored on the machine, on the V-drive, and then of course we have the physical paper ballot. So it's triple-backed up, election results. And you can actually do audit logs to verify that all three of those match, so that we have the correct results. You're also going to get the paper tape from this all the time here.
So you have two pieces of paper and a V-chip?
There is, yeah, so there'll be this, this.
Right.
And it's actually on the machine as well.
Okay.
So you've got, you have two paper, this and the machine.
Okay. But we've not had any problems in the past that I'm aware of, have we?
No. No.
Yeah, okay.
We have not.
Okay.
Elections have gone very smooth and, and.
Well, Mr. Williams was talking about issues, but, but we've not had those issues. Other places may have had, but we haven't had those issues.
Other than, you know, like a machine going down that we cannot use.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's electronic equipment, after several years, you're going to get this computer.
Sure.
So there, there were spares on here.
I just wanted to clarify that because he talked about issues, but that may have been of other, other places, but.
Right, yeah, no, all kinds of, of elections.
Okay, thank you.
Unless we added equipment, I think this was.
The total?
The total.
The total, okay.
So it's. I think we had, but I'm going to, worst case, it would be twelve thousand more.
Twelve thousand more?
Well, do you want to have something, I mean, we can order them next meeting, can we have an order prepared of what, to make sure that verify that we're?
I think that's best.
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Make sure we're getting what we're getting.
Does that meet your time, people?
Yes.
Do you, do y'all feel more comfortable with what we're doing? I mean, that, I think it was.
That's why I asked Danny to come.
And I'm here after the meeting too, if you guys want to.
If you all want to check them out and see what they do.
I can do the work, can that?
If you want to check them out as well, yes.
But I think, but I think that Mr. Williams makes a very valid point. With the new equipment, I think there ought to be something, you know, put out for the general public. Because I know some people do have concerns in regards to the, to the new systems that are being used and so forth. Maybe a good idea.
Right, but till we get the new machines, we can't.
Oh, I know.
We can't do anything with them.
But maybe he could do a presentation or something as well.
And we have to do it with our poll workers or no one's going to be able to, to, to know how to do them.
Something I actually did at Mason County just yesterday was, was set up equipment in her office and they purchased several months ago. But she had all of her office staff come in and we did a full demonstration. But you could invite poll workers to that or even the public, so.
Yeah, yes, sir.
With all that money, how mu, how many of those machines is that money about? How much are they up to, certain amount, a hundred and some thousand?
Hundred, it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and how many is it?
So the, the state has allowed counties this year to kind of change the way they're doing voting. So, you know, a county like Clark County doesn't necessarily have to have voting locations all over the county open. If you guys remember in twenty-twenty, where we had, what'd you do?
Four?
Four voting locations. So that's something they're allowing counties to do this time as well as they want. Michelle's opening.
Four, four community-wide and then trap. Trap, so if anybody lives in trap, they can, they can come to town and vote if they want to, but no one from town can go to trap. So trap is for, only for trap people, because they were too far mileage-wise away from the first vote, voting facility.
And Michelle's sending a plan to the state, the state looks at that, looks at population registered voters and kind of has to approve that before that can happen. That's going to be thirteen scanners and that's going to be, so you're going to have multiple scanners at each location, so that there won't be a line backed up at the scanner. You typically don't have a line at the scanner anyway, if you watch me scan those ballots, it's four or five seconds, it scans and drops. So to avoid lines, which Michelle did great with in twenty-twenty, we're just going to have multiple privacy vote stations where the voters are going to be filling that ballot out and then as they're leaving the door, they're just going to be scanning the ballot in and dropping. So that's going to be thirteen scanners. You're, you're only required by state law to have one accessible device at each location. And so that's going to include seven accessible devices, which will be one of those at each location, probably one for early voting and then we'll have to have some one at trap and then a spare, a spare machine as well. And that's also going to come with a new tally computer. So at the end of the night, those drives that I mentioned that are stored in here, locked, that poll workers bring back with them, what the results are at the end of the night, those are electronically tallied too. So they're tallied here, they're tallied electronically and then of course we've got the paper ballots. But that includes a new computer and everything that comes with that to tally those new cards at the end of the night. A report printer, you're going to have those drives, as I mentioned, in every piece of equipment that has the election information. And then those parity keys, which I mentioned to you, that's the security tokens. Show you those real quick. That blue security token, that's going to include four of those. We have to have these in order to put that election information on there. That keeps anybody from, if they were to somehow steal or access those V-drives that are already programmed, they couldn't do anything with them without this as well. And so, and then Michelle has to have one of these back here in order to read those results. So this token has to match what's on those cards in order for her to be able to tally too. So there are a lot better security measures in place with this, with this new equipment as well.
Voting goes pretty quick, but will this shorten that time even or will it not make a difference at all?
I'm sorry?
Voting really goes pretty quick at the end of the night.
Oh, yeah.
So this won't, this, this, really won't have an effect on that, it'll still go just as quick and.
I think it'll be quicker because we've got less locations coming back.
Okay.
We've only got four.
Okay.
And you have to skip to going to.
Yeah, that's true, that's, that's why I say it goes pretty quick anyway at the end of the night, okay.
We have, there have been several counties that have already used this equipment. Seven or eight of my accounts used it in twenty-twenty. And it was one of those things where it's, it was easier for the poll workers because the first part of twenty-twenty, when we had COVID hit, we were afraid to go into the counties and the counties were afraid for us to come in there. So we did like a thirty-minute training on how to use this equipment. And all of those counties went very smoothly. There's probably about sixty accounts that have already purchased this, this equipment in Kentucky.
So Michelle, the primaries are typically not as heavy a turnout as the general, so you intend to use these for the May seventeen?
They have to get ordered in January, correct, Danny?
To be able to.
To be able to.
Ensure that they come in on time and then us do training and.
And then the names of the state will be dispersed in February.
Answer your questions, yes, Greg.
So the, you think there'll be enough of these machines then for the primary election? Will you need more for the general?
No.
Okay. Even with the heavier turnout that you may have in a general?
We're going to have a packed ballot as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
It's going to be packed.
Yeah, two scanners. Two scanners at a precinct is going to be, I mean, plenty to, to, your, your line is going to be around the room.
And not only that, but we've got three days of early voting. And so last year, I don't know if any of you all voted here during early voting, in twelve days, we did ride at ten thousand people in twelve days. Now the state is only allowing us three days of early voting. So if we didn't do five or six thousand, that takes five or six thousand out of the line on election day.
Generally, the line is signing up and showing them your ID and that sort of stuff and then.
That's to sign in on the phone.
Yeah.
iPads and then you'll pick up your ballots. Everything's going to be in here as far as, as a, well, I haven't asked you all for that room yet, so. Let me retract on that.
But I mean, even at the voting, for voting precincts, usually the line is, when you first get there, it's not scanning the ballots.
Right, five seconds and you're done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My plan is to have like ten people sitting out there checking the end and once you get your ballot, it's, it's all on you, however long it takes you, you, you to catch your ballot.
Exactly. But to kind of recap on what Larry had asked, thirteen and seven, twenty, twenty total units with some associated equipment.
And that's for four community-wide vote centers and trap. Trap will have one machine of each.
You got a couple backup in case some, one of them goes down.
And then you have to have backups in case one goes down. And that has happened, we've had to take a back out, back to, to a precinct, that has happened in the past.
But the pro two, those vote centers as well, as you mentioned, you've already got two there. So even if you had one go down, previously in a precinct, we were kind of stuck until we got the spare out. Well, now you've still got one that works while we get the second, you know, backup back out there.
Mr. Williams, did we cover everything that, that you talked about pretty much, or?
Pretty much.
Okay.
I would love for you to stick around though and, and check them out.
Sure.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Court members, y'all have anything else? Any comments or?
Do we need a motion to draft that order or are we just going to make it happen?
Hang it on the next agenda.
Sounds good.
And that'll give us plenty of time to.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're at number eleven, second reading of an ordinance to amend our Clark County fiscal budget. A motion by Magistrate Constantopoulos, second by Magistrate Blanton, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have an order, consider an order to move Carl Stepp from part-time custodian to full-time county maintenance worker.
Second.
Motion by Magistrate Constantopoulos, second by Magistrate Elkins, any discussion? And y'all noticed the date, the effective date?
Yeah, I saw that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have an order for the animal shelter holiday calendar.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Magistrate Blanton.
Second. Tom Thompson.
Second by Magistrate Thompson, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then consider authorizing the county judge executive to sign the documents for East Kentucky Power with regard to the Ford Tower.
Sure move.
Motion by Magistrate Elkins.
Second.
Second by Magistrate Graham, do y'all have any questions on that, what we're?
Same thing we've talked about a couple times before, yeah, with.
Right, and, you know, and I had a conversation with the county attorney and we think that the court might have considered it before, but we're making this a good rock solid approval, so.
County attorney did look at it and said it's okay, huh?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, William.
Yeah, I'm going to say look at it.
What's that?
We've passed them around here, I think, three times.
Exactly.
Yeah, we, we had some conversation over it. Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I think we're at item fifteen, discussion regarding our health insurance and our stop-loss adjustment. And I'm going to turn the floor over.
Good morning.
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 First of all, thank you for your time this morning. We were informed on December twenty-first. There's nothing to panic about, but there is information that was brought to our attention in an email we received on December twenty-first from IPMG, the administrator, from the underwriters on the stop-loss insurance. Now, the stop-loss insurance rates are firm, but there is a growing practice and trend resulting from this practice in the area of identifiable situations where the insurance companies with high impact and high need circumstances have high impact and, and high impact adjustments and reactions in a manner in which they price group health insurance. The circumstance that came to light results from a situation that is going on all over the place with high-impact needs resulting from high-impact things that, that do occur to all of us. This is what took place. When there is an identifiable is, issue in the health insurance world, and I have, you know, an, an item here for you to be able to understand what's happening. Insurance companies don't absorb the cost for what they know. They have a high probability and almost certainty to have to pay. And they package it into a insurance premium with a, a, a cushion for themselves to have the funding to pay for what they know. Insurance is meant to protect against what you don't know. But we've crossed the line where circumstances come to light that they do know. So this is what took place. The underwriters had been requesting, from what we understand, information from the medical system regarding some identifiable circumstances and the needs surrounding that. There are two ways in which. There are two ways in which these carriers adjust or price their program. There's no way that we can defend against it except to find the best way to prepare for it. One way is, all they do is build that into a premium, they call it insurance, and they make an adjustment of 10%, 20%, whatever it is. We've seen premiums go up 40, 50, 60%. But just because a situation is identified doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to translate into the actual expense that they, that they, they project. And four out of five times, it never reaches the point at which they project. We know that because we've tracked these over the years. So what happened was this. The stop-loss is 75,000 across the board, it has been. And the situation that is a part of this discussion this morning had manifested itself in the course of this year, and the carrier paid out, as a result of their responsibility, substantial, substantial six figures. Now, the prognosis of that, it dictates whether or not they're going to, you know, hold the line. Or if the prognosis is such that there's a high probability that that ongoing treatment and those ongoing expenses are going to continue, then they react. So this is how they reacted. Rather than increase the premium, they create an additional liability. And I want to give you some perspective with regard to how that fits into your, your, your costs and your budget and funding anyway. And they project that they would put a cost-sharing cap only on this particular condition, only on this particular situation. In the event that it blew up, the cost-sharing takes place. If it doesn't blow up, then there's not the same impact, but it's a $400,000 situation only in this particular circumstance. Everything else is the same. To give you a little insight into what's happening here, I'm going to leave you with an item that came from a trade journal that says Costby claims put outsized burden on health plans. It's going on all over the place. And when you've got treatments for some, you know, dread diseases, it's no secret, the numbers are growing and growing and growing. So there's two ways that this would have impacted a, a program. I understand last year, you know, a couple of carriers refused and declined even to provide a quote. Now, what we found out was that there were multiple carriers that had looked at this. Three carriers made offers, including the, the incumbent. After we found out about this, we went back to those carriers, three of them made offers, and they all came in with the same result, 400,000, 400,001, and 525. So therefore, that is, you know, a, an unavoidable reality that we needed to bring to your attention right away. When, when I found out about this, we made contact right away, you know, with, you know, with Nevin and Danny and, and discussed it beyond, and therefore, we felt it was absolutely necessary for me to come down last week and, and, you know, address this and also come down today to bring this to your attention. For you to have some perspective, however, the cost this year, you have two levels of protection. One level is on the individual circumstance, one level is on the group circumstance. Portion of premium that is generally, unless you control the, of the program, that is put into the hands of an insurance company is known as reserved for claims. If you had put that portion, reserved for claims, into the hands of the insurance carrier as you had done in the past, that was running at the rate of about $100,000 a month, that's what it would have been, reserved for claims. Your total claims were 904,000 through December 31st. Of that, 333,000 was paid by the insurance carrier for issues that exceeded your individual stop-loss. That means that the actual net claims to the plan this past year was 570,000, or 46% of what would have been incorporated into a premium in a conventional marketplace. Actually, the maximum liability of that 100,000 a month has gone down, exclusive of this certain situation. Even if that, you know, that difference between what the potential liability is and the 75,000 this past year, your overall cost would have still been less than what the reserved for claims that were priced by the insurance system would have been altogether.
That was for last year.
That was for last year. So going forward, it appears that if that actually reaches that point, 570,000 is what your costs were last year. If you have to be impacted by the additional 325, that would add up to about 900,000 this year, when the funding for reserved for claims was still running at about 100,000 a month. So therefore, there's no guarantee that that circumstances would take, that that would come to reality, but the, the fact is that it is a known issue, and this is the, the trend in the practice of the insurance system. And it's something we wish we can make go away, but this isn't the only time we've seen this happen. And so we have to figure out, as an advocate for an employer, what's the best way to be able to mitigate the impact of that need? Is it to just hand premium off to an insurance company and call it insurance and it went up X percent and that's what we're used to? Or is it to identify where the need exists and find the best way to pay for it and be able to be in a position to get the best price for it? And that's, that's the reason why we, we came this morning. Now, gentlemen that came with me, I want to introduce you to Jack Abbott. Jack is one of the officers of the administrator, IPMG, and I'd like him to explain exactly the, the timeframe, the logistics of what took place, and the principals of IPMG are calling in some markers in your behalf right now to see if, in fact, we can get this mitigated to a greater degree that we already have.
The gentleman in the room speaking.
Yes.
Could I make this one suggestion?
Yes, sir.
If there's anything else that's going to be said about this matter, I would suggest that it be described and explained in much plainer terms. This is not sounding like, you're saying a lot of things, but it's very hard for me to try to figure out what you're saying.
I understand that.
I can't understand if you're telling me that you're, that this fiscal court has agreement with you and others for the provision of medical insurance, and suddenly there's been some surprise in terms of cost, and you're asking for money outside the contract or what it is that you're talking about?
Well...
I can't understand. I'm going to, I'm going to guess there's a lot of other county...
I would, I would understand that. I, I'm, I'm trying to be careful to, because we're talking about proprietary information here.
So don't name names.
Right.
You don't have to name the condition, but all the rest of that, gosh, I mean, I could be more inept.
All right.
Here we go, this is what happened, and then I didn't hear anything.
All right. This, this, this is what took place.
And we, and we all know you too, but would you give your name and affiliation for the record?
Yes, sir.
We all know you, but maybe the public don't.
Yes, sir. My name's Howard Danzig. The name of, you know, our company is ECHIC, E-C-C-H-I-C. It's an acronym for Employers Committed to Control Health Insurance Cost. And, 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 and be a little more specific. I won't name the condition.
Can I just ask you this one question?
Certainly, certainly.
Are we talking about matters that are already covered by a contractual agreement between this court and you or someone else?
The, the matter has to do with the, the insurance contract between an employer...
Do you answer my question?
I do.
Okay, can you give me an answer?
I can. It has to do with the contract with...
That's not what I asked you. That's not what I asked you. I didn't see any of this ahead of time.
Right.
It's my responsibility under statute to conduct all business to the county.
Right.
I asked you a very specific question.
Right.
I suspect you know the answer, and I'd like to have the answer. So you give it to me.
The answer is, this has to do with the insurance contract whose terms dictate at what point they become responsible for claims, based on what information they have regarding the risk that they're taking. Now, when there is an, when there's...
Do you know the answer to my question?
I, 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 I think I'm, I'm...
The question is, is this a matter that is covered by a contract between this fiscal court and yourself and someone else? So the answer to that is yes or no?
The answer is yes, it is.
Okay. Who's the someone else?
The someone else is the insurance carrier.
And yourself.
No, we're not the insurance carrier. We're, we're the messenger.
Okay. Who are you here batting for?
I'm, I'm batting for you and I'm, I'm presenting the information presented to us by the administrator who's here and the insurance carrier.
I'm not trying to hurt you, but I'm just trying to get the bottom of the question.
Right.
Somebody's bench is going to turn me for a bias, I suspect.
Right.
Are you asking for money on anybody's behalf, or is somebody here to ask for money that is outside of a contract that we already have? In other words, additional dollars.
Additional dollars are at stake.
That sounds like it.
That's right.
So what provision in the contract would allow anybody to come back here and say, hey, we miscalculated this, you paid your premiums, you did your part, but we're going to need more money? What's that covered at?
The, the premiums that have been paid have been done so for this past year through December 31st. So we're not talking about any additional money for what has already been in place. What we're talking about is the contract for the insurance coverage and the responsibilities of the insurance carrier from January 1, 2022 going forward. This has nothing to do with an adjustment from last year.
So we don't have, we don't have an insurance agreement in place for February 2022 right now?
Well, for January 1.
We have an insurance agreement in place for February 2022 right now.
It's, it's not firmed up at this point.
I thought we passed that on that over a month ago.
We did pass on, we voted on that last month or previous month.
Jack, I think you may want to step forward and discuss that.
What is IPMG?
Now, you got a, you got a responsibility, not that you would do anything different, but you got a responsibility to make sure that you're informing us, this is a government body, and that you're not, not playing loosely with any words here. You're asking for money, I get that impression, and you can't get that except through just absolute plain transparency.
Right.
So there's a real simple description of what's going on here, expenses of outrunner calculations, we need to cover that some way. Either the fiscal court's going to pay it, IPMG's going to pay it, or the gentleman at the podium's going to pay it, and, and if it, they don't get any plan on that, that's what's going on, right?
No. You have...
So say you lost me.
Okay. We're, we're not talking about any adjustment for this past year.
Well, I know you're not doing that.
That, that's over.
But when I asked you about 2022 in February, you, you played with the words a little bit because I knew we had a contract as I was here and we voted on it.
That's right.
Okay. So you're talking about an adjustment to that contract, which is already in place?
The contract is not finally in place yet.
How could it not be finally in place? We paid the premium on it?
Not for January yet, no.
Well, when did, what would have been the effective first month of the new contract?
I think the administrator at this point should...
Would be December?
Uh, no, January.
Okay. So, so you're talking to this court maybe about not contracting with the reinsurance in 2022?
That's right.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jack, give me a...
A little late in the game, is January 12.
I understand that. My name's Jack Abbott, I'm senior vice president with IPMG, that stands for the Insurance Program Managers Group. Okay? We're, corporate office is in St. Charles, Illinois, it's about 40 miles west of Chicago. I live in Belleville, Illinois. All right? The role of IPMG as a third-party administrator is to process the insurance claims on a daily basis as they, as they come in. We also handle all the contracts, all the administration, we, we pay all the vendors, we pay all the providers. So basically, we are the administrator for the entire plan. One of our roles is to market the stop-loss insurance, okay? And we do that about 60 days before renewal. Your renewal was January the 1st for 2022, okay? We received our stop-loss quotes on or about November the 10th of, of 2021. We put everything together, we sent that, that information to the brokers, Howard and Danny and Nevin in this case, and so what they received from us is what we had, okay? They came here on November 23rd, presented what we had presented to them, and we got it from the insurance, the stop-loss insurance carrier, all right? That's what they gave us. In the meantime, the carrier asked us for more information on certain situations. We went to the providers, we gathered all that information, sent it to the stop-loss insurance underwriters. They looked at it, then on December 21st, gave us a revised proposal, and it's called a final proposal, and they are, they have the right to do that up until the sign, the signing of an application, which has not been presented to this court yet. So on that final proposal, received on December 21st, it had this condition, had this situation of $400,000 liability on one participant. Everybody else has 75,000, so there's an extra 325,000 on one participant, all right? The terms have changed because of the, the providers' information that they gave in medical records, et cetera. The rates have not changed at all, it's just the term of this one condition. Did you...
Well, this is the problem. You walked in here and no one heard you, and this court accepted it on a, on a uncertain, there were dollars involved. There was an offer made, there was an acceptance for money. And what you're asking this court, the best I can understand, is for some redo on that. And while I wouldn't offer an opinion today, after I've had an opportunity to see the whole thing, it's, it's highly likely, but I would say that's a non-starter.
As far as the stop, let me clarify.
You didn't offer to us. I don't know what your offers and acceptance were in the background.
We don't have any.
You just said that they came back with some different numbers.
They did.
It's a counteroffer.
That's their final proposal, and they have the right to, to give you that.
That's between you and them, though.
No, no, it's between this body, this entity.
I remember hearing that we were in here that day. Have you all heard that?
No.
There's contingent upon us.
And we didn't hear anything about it in December.
Wasn't contingent about on anything.
Was that December 24th?
That's what I was looking through.
We never heard anything about it.
Okay. That's why we're here today.
Today.
Well, I know.
This isn't like contracting to dig a ditch and all of a sudden hitting rock, and you didn't include any, you know, cost for getting to rock. Now, that's what we're talking about.
In, in this...
Cost plus.
In our, in this health insurance plan that you've elected to be involved in, every entity is separate. IPMG is the third-party administrator, the brokers are separate, the network that's involved, the, the provider network is involved, that's separate, the prescription benefit management company is separate, stop-loss insurance carrier is separate. Everything is a separate entity. So your agreement is actually with the stop-loss insurance carrier. They would present to you an application for the rates that, that were presented to you on December 21st in this case.
By who?
Well, we will have, we haven't gotten that far yet.
We're there now, I just asked you a question.
Okay. The rates are the same as you were, that was presented to you on November 23rd.
Okay.
The rates are the same. The term of this one situation is new.
I don't understand how come it is that when I ask a question, I can't just get an answer. When I said by who, do you not know who it was?
The, the stop-loss... The stop-loss insurance carrier.
Okay. Who was it? I don't remember them standing in here unless there was a gentleman seated behind you.
No. Their, their name is Ethos Underwriting Services.
Are you telling me they came in here and presented that that day?
No, no, no. That's what was giving, given to us to present to the broker. That's what they gave us on the November, actually November 10th. They came to see you on November 23rd.
So plainly simple, or in plain words, the way I look at it is, is that we were offered something in here. We agreed to it, but then the third party couldn't follow through on what they offered you. So basically, we got sold something that changed.
Stop-loss insurance carrier changed their terms.
On December the 21st?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's, that is, as, as the county attorney said, very late in the game. That should have been done in November.
I fully understand.
Was there something new? Was there not a disclosure statement filled out by this gentleman that has the issue?
Because when they made the offer and we accepted it, it was a done deal then. It's over then. This is something new. We had, we had, we had a provision of services in exchange for a contractual obligation.
I understand.
Our court was bound into money. It was offered. We accepted it. That under the law is a done deal. Now, if somebody in the background has made some change, so products been sold, and now it's going, it's going to cost more to pick it up and deliver it, and the third-party claims adjuster is not going to make as much money off the deal as they were going to make when they were in here that day, and maybe it's even their part plus. Talk to us about that in plain terms. Don't, you know, just lay it right out there.
There's, there's nothing been changed as far as what anybody makes, any fees, commission. Nothing changes. Except-
Except somebody had a responsibility to pay that $400,000 percent to our agreement. It was paid previously, and the theory is, and it's probably real, it's probably palatable, that we'll have to pay it again. Somebody's going to have to pay it again in 2022. And right now, the jockeying is to see if we can switch that around where the court will pay it, which completely defeats the loss, the stop-loss provision for our part. And I'm just kind of hitting the high places because I didn't hear about this in advance in any details.
Sure.
I'd probably been difficult, more difficult than ever today if I'd known ahead of time what we were going to talk about.
Understood.
Yeah, none of us, I didn't know there wasn't anything in, in the packet in regards to what we were going to be talking about.
Well, that gets back to another issue altogether, and I've always held the opinion that if we have something on the agenda, we need an explanation included in that packet so when we get here, we're not shooting in the dark. So if, if we knew this was coming, we should have had an explanation from someone in terms that we could understand so when we're sitting here, we understand what he's talking about.
Write it down so that you can get our written response to the question.
And that's, that applies to anything on the agenda, in my opinion.
So am I, am I correct in asserting that the fiscal court's position as a, as a body, we can reaffirm that, as a legislative body, is that we have, we have approved the contract, and that contract did not have this provision in it, and that's the contract that we want?
Because you signed the doc, you actual signed documents. Did you know?
We haven't signed documents. We have not presented.
We've approved but not been signed.
I asked the question, what provision addressed it, and I didn't get an answer to that. Now, there's other questions I ask, I get answers to too, but now I can't keep track of all of them. But that was one of them. And it might be that the answer would completely defeat my theory. I don't know. But I didn't get an answer, so I can't, I can't process that.
Well, I would have, I would have-
The signing of the document, while it's important, doesn't defeat the offer and acceptance.
You have not signed a document. You have not signed a contract or an application.
The legislative body accepted.
I know to you it's like that because it's convenient. There's money involved somewhere. I'm not here to give you all our time, and I'm, I'm just not going to be, we're just not going to be off the floor with this here dinner checkbook yet.
I understand. We, we, you can imagine, we don't really enjoy being here and presenting this situation. I'd rather not. What the information we were given, that we gave to you on November 23rd was, was valid. That's what it was.
You did not, you did not give it to the legislative body, though. See, only the legislative body can approve a contract or renegotiate a contract, and that's the part I think the county attorney is talking about. We did approve.
What I'm saying is, is that somebody, and I asked the question, who? I'm not sure. God, I'm not trying to pick on you.
Did I?
But you recall me asking the question, who presented it? Because I'm trying to, I'm legally trying to get to the bottom right now on this record, while we're standing here and the tape's running, who it was that made the offer that the county accepted because if IPMG wasn't the person, maybe it was somebody else, but that somebody else might have to answer to us for the cost of that dollar that we talked about that day. Because we made a deal, and now what I'm hearing somebody say is, we're not going to get the benefit of it. Well, maybe not by agreement, but maybe by some other process we will.
The stop-loss insurance carrier gives you the terms of-
They were not here that day.
They were not.
That part I know.
But they were not.
So they didn't make a second offer.
But it was-
They made you an offer.
It was EEHIC who made the offer to the fiscal court on behalf of IMPG.
That's correct.
And they had authorized you to make the offer.
Had, had they authorized us to make the offer from the insurance carrier who sent it to them? And a majority vote here authorized the county to accept it, and that's what happened that day.
Yes.
And that was a legislative action?
That was for a dollar amount certain for a provision of a field of services that are defined in that offer. We'll find it somewhere we need.
Well, and it's more troubling to me that even after we voted to accept that offer, and we all remember that very well, nearly a month later, on December 21st, they elected to try to revise that offer, revise that agreement, which we'd already accepted, which I don't think any of us do anything about, and I don't think was ever communicated to this fiscal court.
It wasn't.
So now, now we're almost halfway deep into January, the year of this new agreement, and we're being told, eh, maybe the deal's not what we said it was at the end of November. So, I mean, there's some serious problems here, and I, I think we have an agreement. We voted on it.
And I agree with Magister Davis. What's troubling is, it's, it's put us in a situation. It was kind of, it's kind of a shell game. Here's where we're going to get you. It's too late in the game now. We're going to flip the shells around, and now we're in a position to where it's going to be hard, if we didn't agree to your contract when it was originally presented, that we could make any changes.
Sure, we wouldn't have agreed to it that day.
Well, we would not, that's what I'm saying. We wouldn't, that, we would have had the option at that point to research other options, but now we're 12-day week.
We agreed to pay a premium with a stop-loss feature, that the stop-loss feature was below the amount we were actually going to have to pay.
I agree. I agree.
I still am confused by the timeline. In November, I think you said November the 10th, an offer was made.
Or about, yeah.
Yep. And, and what created and when, I mean, so if, if the company made an offer to you of whatever that was, on November the, whenever that was, and you brought it here on the 10th, and we approved it, at what point did, did somebody decide, hey, we better do some more checking? Maybe that offer was not enough. Was it after? Was it before?
They, part of the, part of their qualifications is that after they give an initial proposal, that they can ask for additional records, additional case management notes, et cetera. So after the initial proposal, they asked for that information. We gathered it up for them, sent it to them. And would have been the first part of December, they researched it, they looked and said, okay, we're going to have to put an extra claims liability on this situation.
After we had already accepted the agreement that was made to us.
And it's, it's after we had already given you the initial proposal, yes.
For safety's sake, for safety's sake, I would say to this fiscal court to talk about this on the record anymore at this point. Feeling like we're unsatisfied in a situation that could not very well align with the court record somewhere. We probably just shouldn't say anything else about it. Now, I think it's proper for a closed session discussion on legal issues.
But we are, I suppose, currently insured, where our employees are.
That was the, that's the agreement we accepted. Offer we accepted.
Okay. So upon advice, we're going to move on with our meeting, and we thank you all for being here today.
Okay.
We encourage you to present any of those, you know, these discussions that we've had and the background to them in writing.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
With a timeline, because my concern is, is that the presentation to the insurance carrier was incomplete at the time that it was made. It caused them to miscalculate. They're now looking at the source of that information and saying, hey, this ain't on us. This is on you. And because it's on that middleman, whoever it is, either I'm going to have to get the insurance company to go ahead and eat the loss. I'm going to have to eat it, or the fiscal court's going to have to eat it. The purpose of the insurance was to make sure that we didn't have to do it.
Thank you.
But if we could get that, could get some sort of document in writing, like the county attorney says, to explain the timeline and the timeframe, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 16, discussion of ARPA premium pay for part-time employees. And Magister Thompson, I think you talked with the treasurer.
I'm passing around some information that the treasurer prepared for me over the last week in regards to part-time employees. We already kind of discussed this when we did the ARPA premium payment for full-time employees. Alicia can expand further if she wants, but she tells me this is an estimate, but she believes she has it pretty close. My intention was just to, with the court's blessing, to prepare an order for the next meeting to, to make an ARPA premium payment to the part-time employees under the same parameters as before on the full-time employees, starting March 2020 until December 2021. And it would be a $50 payment for every month worked for those employees as opposed to a $100 payment that went to the full-time employees.
Just to specify, this is through, unlike, unlike, I don't know, November and not December.
Through November?
Through November, okay.
So be a little bit, be a little bit more on that.
Through November.
I'll make a motion to pre-
A second.
Oh, you would just need to do a transfer at the next meeting as well to transfer that money from the ARPA account.
Yep.
And I'm going to ask, just for, just for uniformity, if the county attorney would mind, could we make an order, a motion to approve an order to attach to this, like we did the full-time employees? So we could have a document?
Sure. I'm in that, in our motion.
To approve an order in a second?
Motion to approve an order. Second.
I think we had a second.
So did you already have a second? Okay.
Magister.
Thought you were looking for one.
I'm good with the amendment.
So we, we've got a motion to approve an order to, for these ARPA, any discussion, motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate your work on that, Alicia.
Yes, thank you, Alicia.
One little piece of paper, but it's a lot of work behind it.
You would have had to do it anyway, so.
All righty. Cool. I put on the agenda to have a discussion about our emergency management director, which right now, it's been served by Chief Asbury. And Chief and I have had some conversations, and we'd like to proceed with hiring someone, and I'd like to know the court's wishes. First of all, can we proceed with hiring an emergency management director? And then should we look for a part-time or full-time employee?
Does the chief have a recommendation?
For a person?
Mm-hmm. Or, or part-time or full-time either?
Do you have recommend, Chief, you want to address?
I absolutely will talk to this measure. I'll answer any question you'd like. I would like to see it to be a full-time employee, and last week's events just emphasizes that even more. I was being asked to perform certain duties as the EM director. Unfortunately, we had 60 cars piled up on I-64 that I was handling at the same time being the fire chief. Now, that situation doesn't always present itself naturally. But I, I think in order to best serve Clark County, it would be recommended that we have two people serving that, you know, two different positions. I'm doing the best I can, and I'll, I'm not trying to say I'm doing a great job, but I, I'm definitely keeping us above water, and I'm not one of the one. I, I would like to see both positions feel that way. If there's two people, they can give 100% in each, each area, and that's the way I feel about it.
Which budget, refresh my memory, which budget would this be, or line item would this be paid out of?
It's the 5135.
I'm going to ask you a question while they're looking at that, if you don't care.
Yes, sir.
I, I know we, previous in fire committee meetings, we had potentially evaluated or contemplated about doing a, maybe combining like an assistant chief with the fire department and an EMA director type, type position. I mean, is that something that's still on the, on the table, or are you, are you opposed to that?
I am not opposed to anything. I, I can just say that we need an additional person in place to help. I would not turn down an assistant chief. It also was coupled with a deputy EM director as well. It's just, it needs to be, in my opinion, we just need another person. So in case of an emergency like that, again, we have two people handling two different jobs. I just wasn't capable of doing both things simultaneously that day.
I think I kind of like that route a little bit better, in my opinion.
But have the chief stay as EM director and hire an assistant part-time?
Well, no, no, is a, we were looking at, at the fire committee, we had discussed this because ultimately, they wanted to have an assistant chief.
Yeah.
Position to where, when the chief, like, you got somebody that's already knows how the department's run and so forth, but making that position assistant chief slash EMA director.
Oh, I got you. I, I had, I had them both as assistant. You're saying assistant chief and EMA director. I got you.
Or assistant, or assistant EMA director. I mean, if, we, we had brief discussions of it in our fire committee meeting at one, at one point.
Yeah, we, we can work out who works for who and whatever if you want. I'm not so much worried about, if I remain as a deputy EM director, I'm good with that. If you make the other person the main EM director, I'm, I'm not really worried about that. That's semantics, in my opinion. Ma'am Perry and that next person will all work together anyway. So, you know, who answers to who is semantics. That's for you all to decide. I just know we need another person.
They would be paid Robert out of-
Yeah.
Half out of, or however you did the salary, one out of the EMA, and then part of it out of the EMA, part of it.
But do you have a preference one way or the other? I guess what I'm getting to is, if you have a preference, if we can get that in writing, as we just went through all this other stuff, get us a plan in writing and say, this is my suggestion. Go with it, yes or no?
I will put one in writing.
That, that, that's what I would, since you've been doing the job, we trust your opinion. Put us a plan in writing and say, this is what I would propose, as opposed to letting, us, us kind of come up with a on-the-spot kind of a decision.
Maybe, maybe with a corollary with the, from the treasurer and working with her on, on-
Right.
How this would be budgeted or transferred from, because I don't think we have anything in the EM line item right now. So that'd be a transfer, just so we know as part of that plan where we'd be taking it from. No doubt, there's some money there for it, and I have to understand that the portion would be reimbursed from the state.
Up to 50%, up to $22,000 from the state, and then we share the balance with the city of Wichita.
The only reason I had not done something like that, I didn't feel it was my position to make decisions for the fiscal court.
Well, I think we're talking about a recommendation because-
I will come up with a recommendation.
If, if we come up with ideas here, you're going to have eight different ideas.
I understand.
Yeah. I think a recommendation in writing, and with, again, with the addendum of where, how it's going to be funded. So everybody understands, okay, we're going to probably recommend transferring from this line item, and then a portion will be reimbursed, and this, that, and the other. So, you know, we know exactly, you know, what to do and what to consider.
And we have a place to start, and we can try and make changes, but at least we have a starting point.
Yes, sir. If it pleases the court, I'd like to meet with the fire committee and Ms. Perry before I make any recommendations, Joe, just so we're all on the same page.
It's time we have a fire committee meeting anyway, so I'd, I think, go ahead and schedule one.
Yes, sir. We have a schedule two in February, but I, I believe we could probably move that up till next week.
Bump it up.
We can, whatever we need to do.
Fantastic.
Be my suggestion.
And the discussion here was with regard to an EMA director and possibly a deputy?
Assistant fire, assistant fire chief slash EMA director.
Serves in that.
We, we just had conversations about-
A part-time EMA or a full-time EMA, and I think he said full-time.
But we'd had fire discussions previously, because he had mentioned wanting somebody part-time for that, is looking at an assistant fire chief that would, half would be as assistant fire chief and another half as deputy EMA director or EMA director or what have you. That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll come back with a recommendation once I speak to the fire committee and Perry.
We'll put it on our next agenda.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, our last item, well, item 18, this discussion with some salaried employees regarding seeking a compensation increase, and I'm going to call Tony. Are you ready to?
I can see it.
Tony was one of them that I've had meetings with, that the human resource director and I've had meetings with, so.
First of all, it's always a chance for me to speak about my program and to cheerlead a little bit for my program. We are currently sitting at 80 on our home incarceration program now. We have started the MAP program, which has been a very good program. We've been quite extensively on that end with child support. That's been a big thing for us, and we've really had a lot of success with that program. We actually have one today who's speaking in front of the legislature today to talk about how home incarceration has helped him through his journey, and how he's on the road recovered because of our program and getting into rehab. That being said, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the body giving the initial pay raises of last time, and with the ARPA money, and appreciate, I have one part-time employee and how I appreciate that as well. That being said, me and Judge Pace had spoken, we had an agreement in place, and of course, that, that went away when he passed away. My budget is very much well under budget for payroll and things like that. I have my payroll here, if you would like to see how. I am at 36% as of 1229 of my salary line items, so we're completely well under that. So, that being said, I would leave it up to the body to see if you want to make any adjustments to that. That, because me and Judge Pace did that, we had an agreement before that. That being said, I don't want you to think I don't appreciate what's been done already, and how much I appreciate what's been done so far. So, I'll leave that up to y'all.
Can I offer a little information?
Yes, sir.
You know, sort of a look behind the curtains at what Tony does. Gosh, I don't know if there's any day or any hour that we might not be texting back and forth about something that Tony has under control, and has that under his control for days or weeks or months, that's not costing the county $30 some dollars a day sitting over there in the jail. They're on home incarceration, they're in the community, they're able to work, they're able to play their child support, he's able to track their every move. I couldn't, I just want to add this, I'm not going to say that the fiscal court ought to do one thing or another, but I do want you to know that in my view, there's no one who could do a better job for you than Tony Kirk's doing, so.
Thank you.
I would echo those comments. Tony and I work together regularly in my career as well, and he doesn't have very many problems, but when he does, he's quick to address them, and we're quick to help him with it. And it's, it's a very good program, and it definitely alleviates at the jail. We talk about that every meeting we have.
Well, could I ask what the deal with, with Judge Pace was, or is that inappropriate to discuss?
We had an agreement in place to bump my salary and Scott Dawson's salary, who is my one part-time employee. Just to give you a little background, Scott, he's a retired metro officer. If I didn't have a retired officer who knew the ins and outs of the court system, I would say we would not be at where we're at now. I mean, with 80 people on, I don't have many employees, but I have 80 criminals I'm in charge of 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that becomes quite arduous at times with my phone and what's going on and things like that. We do a lot of enforcement actions through the county attorney and do lots of enforcement actions along with that. So, that, those were significant pay increases that Judge Pace had talked about giving me and Scott, but they weren't finalized. He didn't come to the board with that. He had planned on doing that for our discussions, but that's where we're.
You don't know what he had in mind, Tony?
I, I do. I sent you the email about what that was, that, in, from there.
I remember that.
Yeah, and from there. And I have a copy of that email, if you'd like to see it. But from that email, that was what we had agreed on. So, that is perfectly in y'all's hands from that point on. So, and I don't want you to think I'm coming here with not being appreciative of what you've already done at all.
Yeah, because you did get the six and a quarter, whatever it was, I can't remember.
Right. And that being said, I mean, that's, that's, that's very nice, so.
No, I understand.
Y'all have any other questions?
Have you met with Judge Branham on those same instances?
I haven't met with Judge Branham about those instances, and we talked about how the, the budget would be affected, and it wouldn't, it would not affect my budget whatsoever. So, yeah, we're all good.
Yeah, we've had conversations, but we thought it was time to come to the legislative body.
I got you. Thank you, Tony.
Chief, do you have anything on, with regard to this?
Judge, I'm just saying that I know others working for the fiscal court may not have the avenue I do. I would just feel more comfortable discussing mine in the fire committee meeting as opposed to the fiscal court.
That's fine. Thank you.
So I'll, I'll do so at that time. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we did have jail monthly reports, and actually, I got one in yesterday for Judge January report, Travis and Greg. So I put both of them on your, I don't think we included them in the packets, but we did put them on, at your desk.
Yep.
I didn't know if you all had any comments with regard to that, or any, if you have anything, or lieutenant?
It's in the report, Joe.
Everything's in the report. It's very thorough, so thank you.
Our biggest challenge right now is getting past this operation, and I, we mentioned with US Marshal Service.
Okay.
So we're in contact with them.
Okay.
Are you making headway on that? I know the FBI seemed to be the holdup at one point. Does that seem to have gotten better?
So, I've been in contact with the FBI, using their leak program, what it's called, with that, it's been down since November. I've called at one point every single day, it went two months a week to make sure everything's back up, and it's not. I've submitted two separate tickets on two separate issues I've had, and I'm still waiting to get your back in on that. I still have contact with them to make sure, you know, I don't expect to get a call back as soon as it's finished, so I'm trying to call them to make sure, once it is, that they're running.
I'm surprised the federal government's not working properly.
Well, and Seth, the cabinet, I have a vote, you know, attached to Melissa with US Marshal Service, so she knows what her response, she made a comment a couple weeks ago, I've got her, and she, the day I was sticking out, when I was trying to contact her, she wanted to get on the phone with us. We had, I actually got in the US Marshal Service from West Virginia, tried to get on the system, and they wouldn't, the FBI wouldn't speak to the US Marshal. So, it's gonna take somebody from the Marshal Service home, somebody from the FBI, and I think that's where we're at. It's important, but that we start that as soon as possible.
Yeah, our budget's getting killed right now.
We maximize, we notice 110,000 on stated things that we just built.
Yeah, I saw that we have several more paying inmates, I guess you would say, than we have.
And to kind of echo Tony, as we discussed in the jail committee, Tony's been great for us. We're, they protect the nonviolent offenders who put them out there, the, the parents that can't pay their child support, they're sitting in our jail, one is racking up the debt, and, and it's just continued to get worse, and we're paying the people. So Tony's been good about that. I'd like to buy another 20 bracelets if we can.
No, 80 of those, that's, I think that's what Tony said, that's pretty significant.
That's huge. Well, you, you deal with the same numbers I do, but that's huge.
It is huge. No, nothing further. Thank you.
One question. Can we jump back up to number 18 real quick, just briefly? And I may have missed it at the end of his, at the end of Mr. Kirk's presentation there. I was asking something popping in my head, and I was asking a question of county attorney, so I may have missed it. So I apologize if that's the case. Is there any other salaried employees that's on this list? Because the, on the, what's on the agenda is the salaried employees.
Right. There was, I, I met with, well, human resources director and I met with five, but I think some of them had, had withdrawn. And then Chief has opted to go another route with fire committee. So that would be your five. Three have opted, basically withdrawals, so.
That answered my question. I was just.
Wonder why I said employees?
Employees, and Tony was the only one that spoke there.
Okay, we'll move along if there's nothing else. I don't have any closed session items. And the county attorney, you don't have any, do you, or?
Well.
Or do you want, it's a regular meeting.
It would seem that we'll probably get into some material in order and have an immediate, the call special session will be in order, and sooner the better.
So I, so I could communicate with you on that and issue a call for a special meeting? Okay. I'll move ahead, a couple informational items, and that's something new that I've included. Going to try to include any committees that we hear from that you all just need to see, but we don't necessarily need to discuss or, you know, take action on. Couple things I did want to talk to you about is, during the snow, ice event last week, I was presented with the, the possibility of closing county offices. And we used to say, close the courthouse, and we would put it on the news and the radio and the newspaper and things of that nature. And I went to the administrative code was where it used to be, and I did not see it, so I contacted the county attorney, and we had a conversation, and I don't think, I think the fiscal court, and, and we, I'll let you jump in here in just a second, I'm gonna give my, my, my reasons for not closing the courthouse, because I've had a lot of folks from the public that have asked me. The statute basically gives this legislative body the authority over the buildings and the grounds and the operations. And I think you all could delegate that to me, and I could do it unilaterally, but I think it would have to be done in some type of document. So, William, I'll let you go.
So I think that the administrative code would require the judge executive to follow the code and the orders of the fiscal court. And one of the orders that the fiscal court could make would be to authorize the county judge executive to close the county courthouse. Obviously, can't close state offices, but close the county courthouse and its operations in times of emergency.
County offices?
Right.
Well, I don't know that you could say that he could close the shells office, you want to the state.
I got you. Okay. I got you.
That's state business, but could certainly close the county courthouse, the county office.
County offices within the county courthouse. I got, that's, that's, I was asked the same question last week, and that's, that was pretty much my answer.
And, and that, that was the reason, that's the reason I wanted to offer you all an explanation as well as the public. But is that something that you all want to proceed with, that we would prepare a document for you to review and approve, or?
Would that require two readings and notices and?
I don't think so. You just, by order.
Okay.
I think for emergency purposes, you gotta have that.
I do, too.
So just draft an order for next meeting.
Yeah.
And I hope it doesn't have 10 inches of snow between now and then.
It is forecasted this weekend.
Yeah, but I think they're backed off of that, so.
And I'm afraid you're probably right, Greg.
Yeah.
And another thing along those same lines, one thing we were presented with, and I just kind of wanted to gauge your all's, oh gosh, your interest in this, I guess I would say, the, the employees and I, the central, I could, the central office employees would be the judge's office, the director of finance, and the treasurer, and those right here in the courthouse. And we had the conversation, if we, if we had the ability, you know, if we were closed for inclement weather, or, then we've also had, been presented with some COVID instances. We've had two. One was resolved where we had someone in the office that was around someone that tested positive. The person took the PCR test and ended up testing negative, so that person was able to return to work. And, and we've got one now that we're working with. And in these instances, we could, you know, simply, if, if they do have to quarantine, we could let that person work from home. Now, the capability would probably involve, and we kind of just did an assessment of, of equipment we might need, would be six laptops, and we'd need to upgrade our server and some software. Now, we, we could get you all that cost if you all are interested, but is this something that you all would be interested in pursuing?
Cheaper route, because we went through this with my business, is ultimately, you can, most people have a computer at home, and they can just control their computer here. You can, you can sign up for a program. It's very inexpensive, and you have complete access to everything that you have here. And then that way, all, all stuff that's proprietary or confidential actually stays with inside the confines of this building as opposed to going back and forth.
And, and that's a question I've got, and the county attorney may or may not weigh on this at this time. If someone used their personal computer, what type of?
All, it's Internet Explorer, just Internet.
Well, no, no, I mean, for example, then they're going to have access to information on their computer?
No. They, they, basically, they're controlling their computer here at the office.
Remote control.
Remote control. So in other words, you have a username and a password to get into a program, and then, and then it asks you for a, it shows all your computers that you have listed there, and then you have their individual password to get into that computer, and they're operating it. So if you were sitting at their desk here at the office, you would see everything that it's doing. And then it also shows a log of when they logged in on that and when they logged out. So it's, you can see everything that they've done on that.
William, would that, do you think that would keep us somewhat secure, or?
Well, the, we do that.
You do? Okay.
We use, Daniel's a far more computer savvy than I am, but we use remote PC.
That's what we use.
And basically, I mean, you're sitting at home, looking at your desktop screen, and if I executed an email on that screen to send myself material that was on my computer down here at the office, you'd be able to find it in the same way that you would if you went over there and looked on my computer and see if I'd been doing it, you know what I mean? So.
So that would have any impact on other remote circuits?
No.
Correct.
Electronic communications, blah, blah, blah.
And then the state went across and bought laptops for all the cabinet workers, so that they could all either be at their desk at a dock station, or take, be able to access their desktops remotely.
And we also talk, you know, even outside of COVID, you know, if the damage to the courthouse or something that we couldn't, we couldn't get in.
Something catastrophic happened.
We would have it shut down at this point. The county government would seize. So we need a plan that has, we need a backup plan if that should ever happen. Hopefully, it will never will. But, you know, the goal is to have that brace if we ever need it.
Is there any perfect way to transact business over the web, Mike? But if you, as long as you have a DSL cable, Cat 5 cable or something like that plugged to the back of any computer, then there's always that peer-to-peer capability if somebody knows how to break your firewall, so.
Oh, yes, sir.
Judge, I'm sorry to inject there, but what Janet's talking about is continuity of government plan. We actually have that in emergency operations plan, which just needs to be updated. Sorry, I've got to.
Okay.
But if it's, but if it's a situation, because I know a lot of these computers, they may have been updated since, since we last spoke, but I know when I looked at a couple of those computers, they were running Windows 7, which is not even supported, it's not even supported anymore. They've, they've upgraded to 10 now, but some of those computers probably need to be replaced, and I think if you replace those computers, you want to replace them with a laptop and a docking station.
Yeah, that's, that's a conversation we had last year, to go ahead and just replace the computers with that type of situation. That way, we can be more flexible.
Okay, okay. So we're kind of moving toward what we've talked about. Okay. Because I get lost, Janet, on some of this stuff.
So is this something we're gonna address in the new budget? Because we're talking about spending more money.
We could. We could. We'll need to, we'll need to come up with, you know, like a proposal. We just kind of wanted to gauge your all's interest right now and kind of let you know where.
Yeah, I have a proposal we do in the budget.
Okay.
There's, there's one recommendation, if you're talking about continuity of government and you're talking about servers, you need to have it as an off-site server.
Mm-hmm. That's a very good point, and that's a conversation we had as well, Daniel. And should we go ahead and be looking at something like that? And, you know, I don't want, I don't want to think about bad things, but let's say the courthouse got destroyed and all of our computers were destroyed. We back up information, but not all of our information, right?
The only secure information you would have is what Alicia takes home. I think she takes it home with her.
Technically, I can just explain the way my business works, which is, it's HIPAA compliant, and there's security, and we have to maintain all these even in a disaster. And if my office was wiped out tomorrow, I could be anywhere in the country and pull everything up immediately. But what you have to do is, you have a server on site which you're connecting to, that's backed up off. that's backed up off-site in multiple states, so even if there's a big tornado that came across three or four states or something like that and wiped all those servers out, you've still got them in different geographic locations and it's constantly backed up. And I think what I remember correctly is, is right now it's being used like almost an eight-track disc, the old tapes, which that, a lot of that, a lot of that technology's pretty much extinct from things, so I, I agree, I think we need to upgrade a lot of that stuff.
Do you know of a company that we could have a conversation with? Could you put us in touch with some, a representative, just to come down and have a conversation with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a company as well.
Okay, or either one, or both. You'll let us talk about both of them.
Have a couple, another thing that we do is we have a phone system, Daniel probably does too, that I can unplug my phone at the office, take it home, still has the same phone number as if somebody were calling me at the office.
Yeah, I've got.
Makes that very handy as well.
Okay, wow.
Technology.
I'm telling you, past me up.
Me too.
I've got a ten-year-old son that can show me how, or grandson, excuse me.
Same with grandson, yeah.
Okay, one more thing and I'll, and I'll hush, yeah, Jay, you laughed about that one, didn't you? Spoke with AOC yesterday, I think I've had a conversation with them before, they're, they had started a project with Judge Pace and I don't know if you all were aware of it, it's a renovation, William, you may have heard about this, of the third floor here of the judge's suites and the courtroom and law library and home. Were you all aware of that? They're getting ready to start moving forward with it and what, what they would like, and I've asked Magistrate Blanton if he would sit in on me, once we start the conversations with the architect and the, the hired consultants, the fiscal court will be approving a memorandum of agree, excuse me, of understanding and we would, the money would be reimbursable at one hundred percent. We would do the advertising, the bids, secure the bids, of course with the advice of the consultants, and then AOC would reimburse us one hundred percent. So, and the, kind of the tag to the project right now is four hundred thousand dollars. Just want to make you all aware of that, it's coming.
How much?
Four, four hundred thousand. There could run over, that's just the, the numbers they've got right now and those numbers will be defined later as we move forward. Any questions?
And how much is that reimbursed?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Only a hundred.
You want me to shoot for a hundred and ten?
You could get it, that'd be good, Judge.
Okay, that's all I've got, I think we're at magistrate comments. Anyone want to start us off? It's up for bid.
I will, I'll just say, and I don't have much, I want to recognize the various departments that did perform outstanding during the snow event that we had. I just can't say enough about the road department, the fire department, that were on call and spent twenty, thirty, forty hours working straight through, police department as well, Travis.
And I wrote them all down, Greg, I'm just going to expand for animal shelter, the, the maintenance and, and custodial employees, our central office employees, home incarceration, the detention center.
Snow removal group here.
The sheriff's office, county clerk's office, so I hope I didn't miss anybody, but yeah, you're right.
Outstanding.
Did a great job.
Made, made me proud, I was in Jessamine County and someone had been driving the roads of Clark County and bragged on how good our roads were, better than Fayette and Jessamine.
Yes.
Sorry about the Jessamine County folks.
Did you have to say that?
I have nothing further, Judge.
Okay.
The, I guess, question for Michelle, the financial disclosure forms we, we had on our table today, what's the due date on those? I know it's usually.
I think those are March first.
March first.
Right. I'm just the recording office on that night, signing. Other than that, I don't do anything with those.
All right, that's all I.
I think it states on there, is it March first?
Well, it says sixty days. Sixty days.
Exactly the kind of judge's office that passes in my office, I'm just.
I think that would be March first, or thereabouts.
I'm not from the judge's office.
It's my fault, William. I'll get you one, I promise.
And nothing else.
Robert, I, I noticed that the final ARPA rules were published and I'd still like to get on that so we can kind of start making some preliminary decisions as to what we're going to do with that, with those funds, so.
Okay.
If we could kind of put that on our scope of work to do here in the near future.
And I think Alicia saw where there were some adjustments or changes, amendments to?
A few, I think.
Did you see that, Robert?
I think I saw that too. And then the other thing is, you had emailed us the changes to the joint city-county administrative hearing board, I think the city approved their first reading, so.
So we need to get it over there.
If we need to go ahead and get that on our next agenda perhaps.
Okay, I will.
I, I don't think they made any changes, I, I don't, remember, I looked at part of their meeting, but I don't think they made any changes, so.
Okay.
We've already had a copy and looked at it, so we can kind of put that on our horizon as well, good deal.
I'm good. Daniel?
A couple of things. In regards to the ARPA funding, we had, we know we already have allocated, I think it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for internet services. Prior to Judge Pace's passing, me and him had been meeting with some executives with AT&amp;T in regarding to expanding internet broadband in areas where they're currently serving, which is outside of the scope of work from charter. So my question to you all is, is I had several areas in my district which were served by AT&amp;T that are rural that they need to expand to, they're getting some information and price information, but I wanted to ask each magistrate or if anybody here in the court knows of any other subdivisions or rural areas where AT is serving that I could give them as well so they can continue to pull their numbers and price things and then hopefully make a presentation to this body.
I think Yorktown was not included in, if I recall correctly, because Jerry Edwards, their HOA president, had asked me that at one point several months ago, and I think they were not included, if they're not, if you could ask, inquire about.
Yeah, I'll inquire about that. And then if, if y'all think of something after this meeting, I know I just, that conversation took place late yesterday, but if y'all can think of anything, let me know. In regards to the special call meeting, do you know when that's be, can we kind of get a consensus? I know, because everybody's scheduled, is probably filling up, I mean, how soon do you think you need to do that?
You think we could have something ready next week?
I would try to do it, I mean, I would, I would try to do it a little later than Monday.
Oh, this coming then?
Yeah, so of course, you know, and I'd rather, you know, have a morning and part of the afternoon and think about it, then discuss with you what I think we ought to do at that meeting, so we get the proper materials together, but, you know, start at any time tomorrow afternoon, exclusive of Friday, they're going to jury trial. And we get them on Monday.
I'm sorry?
Monday, August.
Oh, we're home, that's right.
Holiday.
Could we go for Tuesday?
It's four o'clock.
Nobody told you?
Well, that would, that would take it Wednesday for me because I have jury trial on Tuesdays.
Okay, how are y'all, magistrate, tell you, look at Wednesday, the nineteenth?
May be that long to get information that we're.
Yeah, because we're going to need that information to have, yeah.
We can do morning, afternoon, evening?
I have something at eleven AM, eleven thirty, but I could.
On the nineteenth?
Yes.
But I could be free before or after that.
I mean, y'all do late afternoon, I mean, what's everybody's schedule?
What about, what about Wednesday at, say, eight thirty?
Travis, you all work with them. Eight thirty in the morning? Yeah, I'm good.
Y'all, I can't do it until sometime in the afternoon.
What about like four thirty or something or four?
Sometime in the afternoon I could do.
I cannot do the afternoon.
You can't do the afternoon?
We'd like to hit everybody if we could.
How about one?
Earlier the better for me.
What about maybe three, does that work?
I think Travis can get you.
I'm out on the afternoon.
Yeah, if we did eight thirty, what's the latest we could do in the morning? Well, Greg's, you've got to be somewhere delivered.
I've got something also, late, late Wednesday morning, eight thirty would be, would work for me, Wednesday morning.
If it did take more than an hour, so I could do that as well.
You want to do it a little bit earlier? Eight?
Eight. Earlier the better for me.
Eight works for me.
I'm good with eight.
I'm good with eight.
Yeah.
Eight works for me.
On the nineteenth?
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I'll get the agenda prepared.
And we'll just have that one on close session?
That's it. That's, that's all we'll have.
That's all I've got.
All righty, Travis?
I just want to thank William for stepping up and clarifying that, because it was going down a road it didn't need to go down, so just appreciate you stepping up there.
I agree.
Joe?
Nothing.
We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
By magistrate Elkins?